Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Northampton Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Wednesday, November 16th, 2022. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We'll start out with a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. The flag is behind me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started tonight, I'll just make a comment about public comment. We have two opportunities for public comment this evening. The first opportunity is for agenda items only, and there's a sign-up sheet in the back. We'd ask that when you...
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll get right into our new business, and the first item is a consider waiver of land development for Rainbow Academy. Barry?
Sure, thanks, Adam. If I can have the folks up for...
...to allow for us to increase the number of students on our property as well as keep our standard of having smaller class sizes in the rest of our building and maintaining that standard throughout the entire property as well. So we want to add those classrooms due to the higher need in the area of having more charging attendants.
It's required to comply with conditions associated with the zoning hearing board approved in the appeal number 2022-18. So are those conditions agreeable?
They are. I agree.
Okay. Fourth item is that the applicant is responsible for getting any outstanding...
I really appreciate that.
Bob?
I'll join in. I may have to recuse myself as well. Mr. LaGuarda, many years, both of my children very recently attended Rainbow Academy. I guess I helped fund this project, so I hope it goes well. I'm sorry I'm not there to see it through, but joking aside, my family had a great experience with Rainbow. It's a great environment, and I'm very pleased to see it not only continuing on but expanding. Just sorry we didn't get to enjoy the expansion, but I'm not sending them back.
Well, he's always grandchildren, Rob.
Cool your jets, Barry.
Cool your jets. It is a wonderful facility, and I agree with Kim. You really are good neighbors. And, you know, to have such a large amount of activity going on there and having neighbors around you and everybody works well together, that's a real testament to you guys, so thanks for that. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks. Thanks for coming.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Next on the list, consider a revised preliminary final plan of land development for Richborough Elementary School. Barry, that's you also.
Sure, thanks, Adam. So this proposed development, which is a revision to a previously approved plan, is located along Upper Holland Road. This is the Richborough Elementary School. Gentlemen, if I could just have you introduce yourselves, please?
My name's Mike Carr. I'm here as solicitor on behalf of the school district, and this is Terry DeGroot, who is our engineer.
Okay. May you have just a... Can you... Bill, can you bring up on the screen a picture of the addition to the survey? So I, you know, reviewing the documents, I see there's, you know, I would call almost three adjustments. I guess you're making a roundabout for better traffic flow on the property for parking, making some improvements there, and also putting addition on the back end and also addition on the front of the building. Can you just explain that, explain that in a little bit greater detail?
Sure, sure. If you want to zoom out. There you go. So, and, yeah, as you mentioned, this is an amendment to a previously approved plan. We are making improvements to the parking lot in the front to improve circulation. We're separating the parent drop-off and pickup, which will be at the front of the school, from the bus loading and unloading, which will be in the cul-de-sac on the right-hand side of the school. And that was all part of the previously approved plan, as well as the administrative addition at the front of the building, at the bottom of the plan, and a mechanical room addition at the midpoint of the building. What is different on this plan is the addition of a 10-classroom, 10 classrooms at the rear of the building. And because there is a hill there, we have a retaining wall and a learning stair back there to traverse the slope and, you know, hold that, those soils back. Other than that, this is very much the same plan. Even with the additional classrooms, we have plenty of parking, and...
We believe the site's well organized and should work out well.
Well, I will say that we did receive review letters and have gone through a round of addressing some minor comments with your consultants and NBCMA. We did, I want to just point one out, they are will comply. And we are talking to McMahon. They had suggested a left-turn lane on Upper Holland Road. And it makes a lot of sense. So the district is agreeing to a left-turn lane on Upper Holland Road. We're working out the details with McMahon now. We agree to eradicate stripes, put new stripes in, but the district is not interested in overlaying the road. No one overlay unless sometimes, on a PennDOT project especially, that comes into play. So just wanted to make that clear. Other than that, it's will comply on all the other items. We did have a few waivers that we requested in our waiver letter of September 7th. I could go through those if you'd like, or you can rely on the...
I think we're good. To be honest, yeah, I think we... The board has reviewed everything very carefully, so I think we're...
I will say, we appeared before the planning commission one time, and they gave us preliminary final. It was that clean.
Sure, yeah.
And last month, we were in front of the zoning hearing board asking for a very minor increase in the amount of impervious surface over that which is permitted.
Yes, yeah.
Occasioned by the additional building area. We had already obtained zoning relief two years ago for the same issue. It was just expanded a little bit. And we got that. I got that decision today, and that was favorable.
Good. Yeah, I believe that the township and the council office worked very closely over the years. You have a proven track record with the other schools that you renovated and made improvements on, working very well with the township. I believe this is the last elementary school that you'll be doing, or is there any more on the plans, or you can even comment on that probably? Probably don't even comment, I'm sorry.
It's on the list right now.
I won't get you in trouble like that.
No one talks about the next one, yet, so...
So, okay. And I mentioned prior, I was in Hillcrest recently, and it was a beautiful job done there. That school recently came back this September, and it's very well done inside, and the traffic flows much better, which is very good. Adam, if I could make a motion, I would like to do that.
Please.
I move for approval of the Richborough Elementary School project amended preliminary final plan of land development, SLD 22-7, subject to compliance with the Gilmore Associate's Review Letter dated November 2nd, 2022, the Pinoni Associate's Review Letter dated October 14th, 2022, and the McMahon Associate's Review Letter dated November 2nd, 2022. It is also recommended that the requested waivers be granted. Approval is also subject to the following conditions. As I mentioned, that the township and the school district work very closely together, and as a result of that, the requirement for the parking recreational impact fee has been waived, so there'll be no fee associated with that. And the payment of the, there'll be a payment of a 70% of the permit fees is required, as opposed to 100%. The applicant shall enter into a land development agreement, an escrow agreement, in a form acceptable to the township solicitor and engineer. This shall include a stormwater management, maintenance, and operations agreement. And last point, as approved from any outside agencies having jurisdiction, shall be required, including but not limited to the municipal authority, DEP, PennDOT, and the Conservation District. Further, approval is granted for submission of any documents that may be required as part of the sewage facilities planning process. Those are the conditions.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
A discussion? Anything else? Barry?
No, I personally would recommend this. I think, you know, the school district has a good track record of making improvements and working very closely with the township, so I would definitely recommend going forward.
Kim?
I just want to remind everybody that with us waiving the park and rec impact fee, our parks and rec also use a lot of the facilities over at Richborough Elementary, so I think it's a fair compromise.
Thanks, Kim.
Yeah, I'm very excited and happy that there's a legal left-hand turn being added. I know it gets very crowded on the weekends with the sports, and it's tough. It's a traffic jam, so this is good.
Thanks, Paul. Bob?
I think my colleagues have said it all.
Nothing further from me. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you for coming.
All for coming. Next on the list, we'll consider cancellation of the NADC museum contract. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In June of 2017, the then Board of Supervisors approved a proposal by the Johnsonville Centrifuge and Science Museum requesting the utilization of five acres of land at the corner of Hatboro Road and Bristol Road for construction of a science museum. In a formal letter dated May 17, 2022, the township provided Johnsonville Centrifuge and Science Museum with written notification of its intent to terminate the agreement. As permitted in Section 26A of said agreement, Northampton Township has a right to terminate the agreement in 180 days from the date of notice, that being November 14, 2022. If I may make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
I move to terminate the concession agreement dated June 28, 2017, between Northampton Township and Johnsonville Centrifuge and Science Museum, which will no longer permit the use of the designated portion of the 39-acre tract deeded to Northampton Township, and direct the administration to revise the program of utilization with the United States Department of the Interior, National Park Service, Federal Lands to Parks Program accordingly.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion? Anything else? Bob?
No, I think this is unfortunately just a necessary action due to the lack of viability of the project.
Thanks, Bob. Barry, any...
I agree with Bob.
Kim?
Unfortunately, I agree with...
Agreed.
Paula? Thanks. Same here. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Bob. Next, consider bids for Eagle Valley Basin and Norton Pond restoration. Paula?
Okay. The administration is recommending the Board of Supervisors reject the bid based on insufficient funding. The administration will work with the township engineer to re-scope the bid specification for this project and rebid the project for future consideration. If the board agrees with this recommendation, the following motion is appropriate. Can I make a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Okay. I move to reject the one, the one bid received for the Eagle Valley Basin and Norton Pond Restoration Project because the bid amount is $392,400, and it exceeds the budgeted amount of $250,000.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And we have a most and a second discussion. Anything else? Paula?
No, that's...
Kim?
I just wanted to point out that the township was awarded a grant from the Commonwealth Financing Authority's Watershed Restoration Program to naturalize the Eagle Valley Detention Basin on Jennifer Lane as part of the obligations under the municipal separate stormwater system, the MS4 permit requirements. The project is intended to protect the Iron Works watershed and is planned to be used as a credit toward the MS4 requirements. The grant award was $212,500, and it required a 15% match from the township of $37,500 for a total project cost of $250,000. And so I think Paula is absolutely right with the bid that exceeded $392,000.
Thanks, Kim. Bob?
The gap's tremendous. This isn't too close to even reevaluate, in my opinion.
Barry?
Yeah, I agree. And to be honest, I'm very disappointed because I actually used to live across the street from there, and the pond is used by many people. And it's unfortunate the bid was so high, but I agree, we have to reject it.
We'll be able to get back and re-scope, but all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next on the list, something we do each November is we ask our township manager, Bob Pellegrino, to come and present the preliminary budget for 2023. He'll be joined by our finance director, Julie.
Good evening, everyone. I am here tonight with our finance director, Julie Neri, to present the 2023 proposed preliminary budget. We are going to start, as we always do, with a basic introduction. These are the topics I'm going to discuss tonight. I'm going to give you a quick summary of the budget, financials. We'll talk about fire service, we'll talk about trash service. I'm going to review some of our main infrastructure projects and finish with a brief discussion, a crisp discussion, if you will, on real estate taxes. So this is a summary. Our operations budget this year is proposed as $47 million. Our capital appropriations are $5.4 million, and our pension funds are $2.3 million. The largest increase here is in the operations section, and these are some of the significant increases. Because of a new contract for trash disposal, our refuse collection costs will go up by $2.8 million. In general operations, which is essentially the general fund where we pay our police, our public works, our administrative staff, that will go up by $1.7 million. But I want to point out that there are a significant amount of interfund transfers going out of the general fund in this budget. $650,000 of that, $1.7 million, is going to go toward our fire services. And then fire protection budget is increasing by $1.3 million, which I will get into a little more detail in a minute. This chart shows our appropriations for all of our funds, and you can see the large blue piece of this pie is the general fund. Again, that's where our police are paid, our public works department, our planning and zoning department, the administration offices, our facility improvements and maintenance and the like. All of our insurance is also paid out of this fund. You can see the next big chunk is refuse collection at 13%. That is increased this year, as I mentioned earlier, because of the new contract. Country Club comes in at a distant third, at almost 10%. I'll point out two here, because sometimes we hear comments about our debt. Our debt service is 5.9% of our total budget. We spend 8.2% on capital, and as you know, we have a pretty aggressive infrastructure and capital improvement plan. We have a lot of facilities, and we have to take care of them. We have a lot of roads. We have a lot of storm sewer systems, and all of those need regular maintenance, and that's what we use our capital funds for. This pie chart shows our appropriations by department. So here you can see that police are almost a quarter of our total operating budget. Trash, again, comes in at 15%, 14% for our roads and highways, and country club appropriations at 11%. Now, I'll mention too, the country club is an enterprise fund. In government speak, that means that we try to operate it as a business, and so whatever expenses it has are paid for by the fees and service charges that it charges to its customers. Fire and rescue at 9%. That is something that will be growing in the future, and as you look at this chart, in the next couple of years, you're going to see that piece of pie get bigger. This chart shows a different look at our expenses. When you look at this chart, you can see that wages, employee benefits, and pensions are about 50% of our total operating budget. And when you think about that, it makes sense because we are a service organization. So it's people that we pay to provide services to the township. We spend about 14% on operating expenses, all of our supplies and equipment that we use. Refuge, again, is a big chunk of this at 13%. Surprisingly, roads is only at 4%, but we are still going to continue to pursue the goal of resurfacing or micro-surfacing 10 miles of our system every year. And lastly, this chart shows revenue by fund. So you can see here that the general fund, which is our largest operating fund and almost half of our total budget, is at 42%, and refuse comes in at 15% again. Refuge, again, is higher because of the new contract that we have. Okay, a little bit about fire services. This is a big item. Next year, we are planning to hire 10 paid firefighters. Now, why are we doing that? Because we need to provide 24 severing coverage, and we plan to do that by next spring. It looks like we'll be hiring in the first quarter. What that will give us is squads, enough officers and firefighters to, again, operate just out of the Richborough Station, providing one truck during each shift. We are looking for a grant, and we've applied for a grant, Safer Grant Program, which is a program that allows us to get reimbursed for the cost of salaries and benefits for paid fire. We have not heard anything back on our application. We're just keeping our fingers crossed that money comes through. And we will continue to rely on mutual aid, which is the services that we receive from our adjoining fire companies and municipalities and townships around us. We, in turn, provide service to them. You all know about the fire station construction. It's already started. It's underway. In talking to the construction managers today, they're telling us that they plan to be under roof by the end of the year. Station 73 will be finished first, when I say finished, under roof, so that they can do the interior work that needs to be done. Station 73 will be a few weeks behind. They're telling us perhaps by January 15, they will be under roof. Now, under roof means that there are walls and a roof on the building. It may not be the brick, but it will certainly be the block walls that will be part of the structure itself. You all know what this is going to cost. We did a bond issue in 2021. Our bids came in, frankly, a little bit under budget, but it's estimated at about $32 million. It's probably the largest public works project we've ever undertaken. Now, a little bit about trash service. This is something that is changing for next year. Refuge, recycling, and yard waste collection is part of the contract. We have four different contracts: refuse disposal, yard waste disposal, and recycling material disposal. These four contracts have been in place for a number of years, but this year, we've separated ourselves from the Hamptons and have bid trash collection on our own. We still have contracts for disposal, and I would recommend we continue those contracts because I do see some benefit to continuing that relationship with our adjacent municipalities. We do get, I think, pretty good rates, and then, and we also know by doing that, we know what our tonnages are, we know what our residents are producing. I think it gives us a little bit better control. Next year, we have a new collector, Whitetail Disposal. They were the low bid out of two bids that we received for collection services. We are moving to a new system. We're moving away from manual collection to automated collection. Now, this will not be for the entire township, but it will be for about 10,500 of our 13,000 households. The remaining households, which are our higher-density residential areas, we plan to continue with manual collection for the time being. Automated service is a service where a single operator in a trash vehicle can pick up cans with a mechanical arm. It reduces labor cost. It protects the refuse workers from sometimes harmful material that they come into contact with, and it is a more efficient way to collect our trash. What this means is that each resident will be given, in those 10,500 households, a new 95-gallon wheeled container. It's cart-only contents, meaning that residents will only be allowed to put what fits in the can out for collection. However, the way we worded this contract, residents who want more than one can can get one. There's going to be a charge for it, but even today, I had a resident ask me that question and was very happy that he could get another can because he says he puts out a lot of trash.
And that's a one-time fee, right?
It's a one-time fee to buy another can. If they want three cans, they can buy a third can, but that is a lot of trash. So we're going to be undertaking an educational program for our residents. This is actually the beginning of it, but Whitetail Disposal will be sending out postcards. There'll be a separate website that will be on their, a webpage that will be on their website just for Northampton residents. It will have all the rules and regulations for waste collection, bulk items, and so forth. Now, the rest of our trash collection process will not change. Yard waste won't change. Bulk item collection will not change, and recycling will not change. I think the difference will be with recycling that they will also be picking up with a mechanical arm, but we already have the cans, you know, that can facilitate that kind of collection. So I think that is going to be a much smoother transition. We know there's going to be bumps in the road. In the beginning of, you know, the year, I think there will be bumps in the road. The new cans will be delivered before Christmas, I'm told. I think we're going to get questions about what do I do with my old trash can? That's a very good question. If you can repurpose it, that's a great idea as a resident. If you want to put it in the trash, you can also do that. Some of them may be recyclable. We don't know, but you'd have to look at the individual can and see. But we are moving to a cart-only content service, and long-term, I think this will benefit the community. I also need to mention that our fee will be increasing. The new fee will be $575 a year. It's a very big increase. But I can tell you that in doing some surveying around the area, it's not out of line with what our neighbors are charging and will be charging in the future. Some of the municipalities that I talked to recently are charging in the 400s when we were charging 300. They know, and I've talked to the other managers, they know that their prices are going up. They're maybe in the fourth or fifth year of a contract. They know that next year, the price increases are going up. The Hamptons are in the 550 range, so we're not, we're not out of line with the going rate here. So this is what our trash looks like today. This is what you see on the street on trash collection day. This is what it's going to look like under the new system. You're going to have these cans lined up on the street. Another click, like that. Much cleaner look. I think it'll improve the appearance of the streets. It'll be more efficient for the collectors, and it will be safer, certainly for the sanitation workers. efficient for the collectors, and it will be safer, certainly for the sanitation workers. So that's a little bit about trash. I want to briefly go through some of our road improvement projects. You've heard me talk about the Township Road Extension and Roundabout Project for probably five or six years. This might be the last year I have to talk about it, I don't know, maybe just a brief update in the future, but that project is well underway. The right-of-way has been acquired. PennDOT is assuming the final engineering design and construction. It looks like 2024 or 2025 will be the start of construction on this project. I don't have a firm date yet, but if I had to give you any date at all, it would be in that range. Jacksonville Road and Almshouse Road Roundabout. That is a project, again, that we proposed to the County Planning Commission, and they thought it was a good idea, they handed it off to PennDOT, and it was put on the State Transportation Improvement Plan, just like the Township Road Extension and Roundabout Project. That project is in design. I'm going to show you some concept plans in a minute. That project is in design. There is some right-of-way that has to be acquired, but this is completely a PennDOT project at this point. Buck Road Streetscape Improvements, I've been talking about this one for about five years. This is another project that was included on the Transportation Improvement Plan, and it is in final engineering design. It will include a replacement of the bridge on Buck Road in Holland, a realignment of the intersection of Bristol Road and Buck Road, traffic signals, left-turn lanes, and the like. And it's also a little bit of a streetscape improvement along Buck Road in Holland, right between Chinkwipin Road and Bristol and Buck. We are planning in the budget next year for a new traffic light at St. Leonard's Road, a new Town Richborough Road. It's something that met PennDOT warrant, and that signal is in design right now. It will be something we'll be putting out the bid next year. Looking forward to that construction. And then we'll continue next year with our paving and micro-surfacing program. This budget includes 9.6 miles of road surface to be treated. Trying to get to 10, I can tell you with oil prices going up, the cost of materials has really escalated, so we've put some extra money into the paving program to maintain our goal. Here is a concept plan for the Richborough Roundabout. You can see Township Road takes a hard right turn, intersects with Second Street Pike and Bustleton Pike. This is really going to create a focal point in the downtown. It's, I think, going to be an incentive for redevelopment and certainly help our property This is a concept plan for the Jacksonville Road and Almshouse Road Roundabout. Again, these are both PennDOT projects. Just an interesting point here, you can see on the bottom right, that green area that's outlined, that is a township-owned property. That is all a wetland, and I'm told it's a rather high-quality wetland, surprising at that location, but PennDOT has to avoid any disturbance of that area. So they've placed the Roundabout in what they think is the best location. There will be some right-of-way acquisition, but again, that is something that the state will undertake. And then this is, lastly, the Buck Road Project. This is the concept plan. The orange shaded area is the bridge. That bridge on Buck Road will be widened with a left-turn lane, and that left-turn lane will extend beyond the bridge so that we get some stacking on Buck Road so we can keep through-traffic moving. The intersection alignment of Old Bristol and Buck will be changed, and there'll be left-turn lanes also at that intersection. So a big traffic improvement in Holland and a lot of money for this project that's been ongoing now for a number of years. The townships share in all of these projects is $750,000. That is engineering, preliminary engineering for all of them, and in the case of Jacksonville and Almshouse Road, we only spent about $35,000, only $35,000, but we presented some concept plans to the County Planning Commission and through their good offices. And I want to give a shout-out to Evan Stone and Rich Brailer from the County Planning Commission. They were very helpful in pushing these projects with the state and getting them on the Transportation Improvement Plan. And what that means is that we're going to have $25 million of improvement in our township for our $750,000 investment. That's a really good return. And that's only those three projects. Now, you know, we're pretty aggressive with grants and grant programs, and every year we get grants for traffic signal improvements, we get grants for detention or conversion of detention basins into infiltration basins and the like. We have a lot of grants, too many to mention, over the years and even ongoing now, and I think it's really a credit to our staff that we are so successful in getting these grants, even the fire grants, even the... We've had a million and a half dollars' worth of grants just for support of our fire service. So I thought this was an interesting piece of information. I hope you have a takeaway here that we really try and work to get as much money back from Harrisburg and Washington as we can for the community. Couple of other projects, these are pedestrian safety and trail projects. Richborough Sidewalks Phase 1 and 2. Phase 1 is finished, you can see those results in the downtown. Phase 2, we're planning to undertake next year. We have actually a grant application for a million dollars to implement Phase 2. We may not get all of that money, but my approach and recommendation to you is that whatever we get, we start, and we keep applying for these grants until we can finish everything. If we don't get a million and we get a half a million, we do a half a million dollars' worth of work, and we continue to work on that. Ironworks Creek Sidewalk Project, this is another one you've probably heard me talk about now for about four years. This project is one where we spent money on engineering, preliminary engineering. We spent roughly $60,000 on engineering. PennDOT, again, picked up this project as part of its transportation program, pedestrian safety program, and they are paying the balance of about a million dollars to finish these sidewalks. And these are sidewalks on both sides of Second Street Pike between Crossroads Plaza Drive and Tanyard Road. And it includes a... We're going to have to work to get across the creek in two places, so it's a rather expensive and complex project. And then we have a trail project, which you've heard me talk about, from Rockway to Tyler State Park into Newtown. We broke this project up into two sections, from St. Leonard's Road down to the park, and then from Rockway down to St. Leonard's Road. We got an $800,000 grant for the first phase, which is from St. Leonard's Road to Tyler State Park down around the Playhouse, actually under the bridge on the Shammany Creek, which already had a walkway there. There it is. And that's the yellow... I'm sorry, the blue area is the first phase. We got an $800,000 grant for that. We are still waiting to hear on a grant application for the yellow portion and for the traffic signal. So we budgeted for the traffic light. If we get the grant, we don't have to spend all of our own money. But that's a pretty significant piece of trail that we will help complete our trail system. And we're still continuing to look for ways to implement our master trail plan, which was done around 2019. The good news, no tax increase next year.
What was that, Bob? Was that animation we just saw?
It was. He woke up.
Wow, animation on the PowerPoint.
No tax increase. That's the good news.
Stop there.
Stop there. I like this chart, this graph, because it shows primarily, what I want to point out here, the blue bars are our assessed valuation. We had our highest assessed valuation in 2010, and then as a result of the market decline, a lot of folks went back to the Board of Assessment, they got assessment reductions, and it resulted in us losing roughly $18 million in assessed valuation. That is directly related to the amount of tax revenue we get. So at the same tax rate, we get less money because our assessed value goes down. You can see from the line that it's starting to climb back up slowly, but we're back up to $591 million. And I have to tell you that the development that we have seen over the last number of years is primarily the reason, I think, that we see this increase. I don't think anyone's going back to the Board of Assessment and saying, "Raise my assessment." So it is directly attributable to what's happening in the community and the improvements that we see in the real estate market. You also can see the green line. We've had selective tax increases. We've gone four years, two years, you know, sometimes longer without tax increases. More recently, they've been more frequent, but we are doing more things. And as we slow down and do less things, I think we can maybe slow that progression. But I do think we have to continue with our infrastructure maintenance and our projects, and all these improve the community and, I think, make it a better place to live. All right, so, cutting to the bone, the median home assessment of $37,000 results in a $799 per year tax bill for real estate taxes. And when you think about it, you get police services, you get fire services, you get emergency medical, you get all the road maintenance, you get beautiful parks, beautiful library and senior citizens center, all these wonderful facilities for about $67 a month, and I think that's a real bargain. The one thing I do want to think about doing next year, and we're going to start this project, and my staff's going to not want to hear this, but I want to do some benchmarking and see how we compare with other communities. I haven't told them this yet, so they're hearing it for the first time. I have witnesses now, yes. We want to do some benchmarking and see how we rank with other communities, but my suspicion is that on a per-capita basis, we get a pretty good bang for our dollar. And I usually finish with two slides. This dollar bill shows the breakdown of the total real estate tax bill. You can see that the township is the smallest piece at 12% of the total bill. So for every $1,000 that someone pays in real estate taxes, the township gets $120 for all of the services I just described. And then, I'll keep this up for a minute because I think it's important. And then last but not least, I always finish with a quote from Thomas Jefferson about local government being a small jurisdiction and the perfect exercise of self-governance for it. So that is my presentation for this evening. The process to adopt a budget in the township is for the board to approve a preliminary budget. That budget has to be available for public inspection for 20 days by law, and then there can be a final adoption. Between the preliminary budget and the final budget, you can make changes. Once you adopt the preliminary budget, you can change a line item, which is a department total, by no more than 10% and no more than 25% overall. Put my slide down. Did I do that? Here we go. I'll leave the dollar up. So before I ask you for a motion to approve the preliminary budget, I want to just give a shout-out to the staff because they really do all the work in preparing the budget. Yes, I look at it, of course, I review it, I make changes, sometimes more than once to their chagrin, but Julie and her team, Alex Nagy and Bill, and all the department directors, they all have input in the budget. The finance department works closely with them. They put a package together, they give me the draft product, and then I put my finishing touches on it, and that's what you have in front of you. So I would respectfully ask for a motion to approve the preliminary budget as I've presented it tonight, and we'll move on to final adoption hopefully in December.
Thanks, Bob. Why don't we put a motion on the floor, and then we can have discussion and questions that come up.
Okay. I move to adopt the 2023 preliminary budget and advertise its availability for public inspection for a period of not less than 20 days as required by the Second Class Township Code.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now we can have some comments, questions, Kim, anything?
Well, first of all, I really want to thank the administration for all their hard work. We see all the work that you put into it. And I also want to thank all the township employees for their wonderful work during the year. Without our employees, from police to public works to libraries, senior, everybody, our township wouldn't be as great as it is without our wonderful employees. So I want to thank them. I also want to say that I'm proud that the biggest part of our budget is for public safety, and because when you call 911, you want that fire, you'll have the police or the fire or EMS right there, and we don't skimp on that. And in fact, don't we have... Right now, we have, what, 44 police officers?
Correct.
So we have a great staff of everybody, and what else did I want to tell you about? I wanted to talk about trash, too. We did a lot of work with trash this year to make sure that residents get the biggest bang for their buck. Everybody's trash prices are going up everywhere because of the costs of fuel, personnel, everything. I think that we got a good deal with Whitetail. I think that we have good value for our money. I think it's good, it protects... Like I said, we're keeping the costs down, and we're protecting the workers by going to the automatic, automated pickup. The other thing I just wanted to make, this one little point, is when you leave your trash can next to your mailbox, when you come home, it will be next to your mailbox, it won't be in your driveway, which is always a plus. And then the other thing I wanted to say that I was really excited about, our new traffic signal at St. Leonard's Road. I feel like that is going to really be really well-needed in our community, and I think that's going to be a great addition. And the other thing I wanted to say is that I really appreciate the fact that our administration has worked so hard for grants and solutions for our traffic problems. We take traffic problems seriously here, and we work with PennDOT to try to get things done, but as a supervisor, and my fellow supervisors will agree to this, that we see how hard our administration works with PennDOT to get things done and get them to pay for it, which is really nice. So just want to say that that doesn't go unnoticed. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Kim. Bob?
Thank you. So this is my second budget. It was a little more than a year ago. I was entrusted with this position by our citizens, and within a week of the election, there was a package dropped off at my door, and I came home from work, and I thought, boy, they give you gifts when you get elected. And then I opened the package, and it was a... And then I opened the package, and it was the budget. So I got to work and read the budget. But it was a little bit like drinking water out of a fire hose at that point. And I remember going to the first meeting and listening a lot, asking questions, doing that again. And the one thing that resonated with me then, and now a year into this, still resonates with me tremendously, is it's not just your dollar chart. And I recognize that. You might want to start using a five or a 10 at this point. But our citizens get a lot for their money. It gets stretched. This township treats its citizens' money as if it's its own. And it's easy to lose sight of that when you don't see behind the scenes. Now, obviously, the budget's available. Come view it. There's nothing to hide, right?
Nothing to hide in the budget. There's a lot of detail there.
It's a credit to you. I think those of us up here sometimes get more of the, we'll say, kudos when something goes right. We probably get a lot of the heat when something goes wrong. But at the end of the day, as I was discussing with the former Doylestown supervisor, the township manager's job in part is to make us look good. And you consistently make us look good because of these budgets. And because, for example, with the trash changeover, which was a necessary, I don't want to call it evil, but it was necessary. And there are some growing pains with it. But I think it's easy to explain to people why costs are up, why the expense is higher, but also what they're getting for it. There's a lot of deliberation that goes into this. And I think it goes, it's easy for the Board to say, "We deliberate in executive session." But that's a fraction of the time that's put in by the employees of this township. So I don't think you guys are always recognized enough. Now, when we get blamed for something that goes wrong, I'd like to shift some of that to you, too, if we could. But in all joking aside, it's just a tremendous credit to everyone in your office. And it does make us look good. So thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, Bob. Barry?
Not a lot of positive things said, which I agree with. Yeah, I'm a finance guy, so I always go through this budget very carefully. And then, I think the administration, Bob, do an excellent job with it. So I'm very pleased with it. Two other projects, Bob, maybe you could just give a very brief update. I know a lot of people are curious about Rails or Trails. I know the funding has been approved by the county. But maybe you could give a brief update on that. And then also, I know on Second Street Pike, we've got PennDOT approval to have all that done. And maybe you could give a brief update on that, what we know today. The paving of Second Street Pike, yes.
Yes, sure. First of all, Rails the Trails. It is a county project. The county is in the design phase for the section from Bristol Road to the Churchville Nature Center. They needed an easement from Aqua, Pennsylvania, through the reservoir property to connect into the trail, which I believe they have recently acquired. The design phase is supposed to be finished next year. They got a grant for part of the design or all of it. I'm not sure. I believe the county then also seeks grants for the construction. But they've been pretty successful in getting those. And I expect they'll get a grant for the construction at some point. And they'll put it out to bid. I'm thinking in '24, it'll be underway. The paving on Second Street Pike and Alms House Road. Second Street Pike was scheduled this year, and Alms House Road was scheduled this year for resurfacing. James D. Morrissey got the contract. They were doing 12.5 miles in the county. I know they've been working their way down from the Upper Bucks area to this area. But I don't see them finishing that project this year. So I'm guessing that, I haven't talked to PennDOT, but I'm guessing PennDOT has agreed to put that off until the spring. It is a project paving Alms House from Spencer Road to Holland Road, Newtown, Richborough and Holland. And then, Second Street Pike from, let's see, Bustleton? No.
Bristol.
Bristol, I think.
Bristol, up to Swamp.
Up to Swamp, right.
It's a major project that we're not paying for, which is great.
We're not paying for that either.
Directly, yeah, which is great, yeah.
Right. That's going to involve milling the road. It'll probably involve some repairs to bad areas and then a resurfacing. Restriping, by the way. We've been involved with restriping, the restriping plan, our traffic engineers. I've asked them to look at that with PennDOT to see if we could change some things and make it more efficient. So the restriping will have a center-left turn lane on Second Street Pike all the way up. And I think also on Newtown, Richborough Road, we'll have a center-left turn lane for most of that stretch, too. It's going to improve safety. It's going to increase traffic flow. You know, when you're turning into Harmony, say, for example, cars always go around you. There's no designated left turn there. And it's a little bit dangerous. That's going to fix all that. But I look forward to that in the spring.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Barry. Paula?
Good. I want to thank you, Bob. That was wonderful. Your humility is remarkable. I love the dollar chart. It's very simple and explains a lot. And I think it says a lot to residents here. I'm just very, very proud of our township, even more so. I've always been happy. I've always lived here for my adult life in this township. And it can't be better. I mean, you know, their fees are remarkable. There are no fees for what we get. And I just, I think it's great and I'm proud. I'm very proud of this township and what they do. That's all.
Thanks. I always like when I have my notes and then everybody says everything I wrote down. It makes it easier, but it just shows how aligned we are, you know, which is great. Of course, thank you, Bob. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Julie. Thank your team. It's a really, I've been involved in preparation of the budget since before I came on the Board, you know, even from my fire service days. And it's a very thoughtful and deliberate process. And the one thing I like, when we talk to Bob, we talk about spending money, he always says things like, "How can we get more for that?" You know, "How can we get more for what we spend?" And we really do try to stretch that. And when you look at that 12 cents on the dollar, you know, I just had notes. We have the best emergency services you can have. You know, I'm a little prejudiced. A fire chief's a great guy, so I hear. But, I mean, you get police, fire and EMS when you need them. You know, you get good quality service. You get good quality equipment. You get 10 miles of road paved every year, you know? And that's new in the past few years, but we've been keeping up that, either paving or microservicing. We have fantastic parks. We have the best snow plowing, hands down. Everybody talks about that. We have a library that handles over 150,000 visitors a year. We have a senior center. We have playgrounds. We have ball fields. And I know I'm not mentioning everything. For 12 cents out of the dollar, you know? Compare that to what you get from the other percentages, you know? And so, that really is a testament to the great work that you guys do. So thank you very much. I agree with Bob. I mean, we're up here. It's a lot easier. But the rubber hits the road in this building, in the back offices. So we do appreciate that. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carries. Thank you. Great work.
I didn't ask Julie if she wanted to say anything. Did you have anything to add?
I am so touched by everything you guys have said. It's so nice. Thank you.
Please bring that back to your team, you know? They should really be proud of this book, you know, and all the work that went into it. It's not easy.
This is the spending plan for the year. And it really sets out our goals and objectives for the entire year. And one thing I will add, and I think I know, you know this, is we're always, 23 is over, as far as I'm concerned. We're looking at '24 and '25 to see where we're going to be going. And that's always in the forefront of my mind. Where are we headed in the next couple of years?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, on to our liaison reports. Kim?
Yes. First, I'll talk about the senior center. Excitement is building at the senior center for the upcoming events that the seniors will be hosting. On Tuesday, November 22, the center will be participating in Giving Tuesday. It's a day dedicated to giving back to an organization that holds a special place in our lives and the community. Everyone is invited to stop by the center, and there will be refreshments and fun. For all the shoppers out there, mark your calendars for the annual holiday marketplace on Friday, December 2, from 5 until 9. Their promise is to be a wide selection of unique holiday gifts, home decor, clothing, accessories and more. The Northampton Lions Club will have refreshments available, snacking and shopping. Now, doesn't that sound great? There'll be something for everyone, and admission is free. Speaking of something for everyone, the senior center offers an extensive variety of daytime and evening activities and programs for anyone age 55 or better. Stop by the center and check out their website at northhamptonsc.com for more information. Now, every year this time, I report what a great event our Halloween happening was. This year is not different. Let me just say thank you to the Parks and Rec staff, volunteers and sponsors who made it happen. I also want to thank my fellow supervisors, Bob Salsar and Paula Gasper, who were excellent judges with me along with John Bishop from our Parks and Rec Board. The costumes were amazing. Our residents outdid themselves. It was a great, great day. And we had a record number of participants, as usual. Some of the best, like I said, the best costumes I've ever seen. And just to let everybody know, I'm planning my costume for next year. I know, everybody's so excited. Okay, now, as we prepare for Thanksgiving, we know the December holidays are right around the corner. Once again, our Parks and Rec staff has been busy planning events, so our residents will have the opportunity to celebrate. Mrs. Claus is unable to fly at night. You know how, when you get older, it's hard to see at night? So she's planning to visit Northampton on Saturday, December 10, at noon this year for a very popular storytime with Mrs. Claus. Remember to register soon, as space is limited. And you can find the details on the Park and Rec website. Fun for the entire family is planned at the municipal park. You can take a stroll and discover the sights and sounds of the holiday season. Pre-record caroling stations provided by the Bucks County Women's Chorus and trees decorated by our local scout troops will get you in the holiday spirit. You know what? And you can also bring an ornament to decorate the live community tree. Backed by popular demand is the Light the Night Contest, showcasing Northampton homes that like to offer a holiday flair to their neighborhoods. Decorate your home and nominate it to the list of area houses that like to go over the top for the season. You could win a top three Best People's Choice Award. The public can view and vote for their favorites on a self-guided, interactive app, which designates all of the decorated homes. You can vote for your favorites and add some holiday cheer to those who put in so much effort to light up the season for all to see. Details on the program and all holiday events can be viewed on the Parks and Rec website, northhamperrec.com. Lastly, the Parks and Rec winner brochure is on its way and will be in your mailbox the first week in December. Make sure you take a look and see what has been planned for you and your family. And with that, I also would like to wish everyone a happy, happy and healthy Thanksgiving. And I'm grateful to everybody here and to our residents.
Thank you, Kim. Paula?
Okay, good. All right, the library. The library has completed the gathering of all the information from the recent survey that was completed by our residents. The library will hold a retreat meeting this weekend in order to understand all the information and the data that was gathered. We will discern what it all means and how the library can move forward and improve. I have an update from the library. Our library director submitted the necessary plan for the 2023 state aid for libraries. And it turns out, the library will, excuse me, will be receiving $151,038 from the state to use in the Northampton Township Library. And that is more than was anticipated for '23. I wanted to give a shout out to Wayne Lair, the new library director. He has proven to be a strong and effective leader for Northampton Library. Okay, the Veterans Advisory Commission, in conjunction with the Northampton Library, unveiled the Patriot Flags Program display this past Saturday. The beautiful flag display and name plaque will not be unnoticed on the high wall by the entrance of the library. This was a proud and moving ceremony. We honored the veterans who have sacrificed all for their country. Okay, and last but not least, the 300th anniversary. And this is the, right, tonight is the final public celebration of the 300th anniversary of our township. The township is holding a local history trivia night tonight, from 7 to 9, if it's not too late to get there. It's being held at the Tavern on 10 in the Northampton Valley Country Club. Okay, the final, final celebration will be right on our anniversary date, December 14, right here at the Township Supervisors Meeting. A reenactment of the original document signing will take place, along with proclamations marking this historic date and ending this special year for Northampton Township. And we, everyone asks to keep the story of Northampton alive by continually checking the 300th anniversary website. It was 1722 when we first incorporated Northampton Township.
Thank you, Paula. Now, Bob?
So no reports tonight, although, since it was raised, I will say, I thought I would judge the Halloween contest. And I thought, "How difficult could this be? Anybody could do this." But I'll put on my ridiculous getup, and I will join my fellow supervisors. And I will inform my children, they can't win, and I will judge. And it's not as easy as you think. But Kim Rose runs a tight shipwreck. It was not her first time. And she threw a clipboard at me and said, "This is what you do." And those who know me know I don't usually follow instructions well. But I said, "You're the boss." So it was quite an experience. I will do it again next year. I have no thoughts about what my outfit will be. With that, I would say have a happy and safe Thanksgiving. And I suspect our fire chief, who's not a bad guy, would say, "If you're going to fry your turkey, don't do it near the house."
Yep, yep. Talk about that soon.
I wanted to beat you to the punch, so. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Barry?
I'll just say happy Thanksgiving. No special reports tonight, so.
Just a couple of quick thoughts. The flag unveiling ceremony was incredible. And, you know, if you have an opportunity to get down to the library, even if you don't visit the library, well, you should more often. But if you don't, go down and take a look at what the tribute to our veterans is. It's a real redo of what used to be behind me here. And it was moved in such a wonderful and respectful way. Definitely a special shout out to Bill Wirt, who lost a lot of sleep and hair over putting that together. You know, Wayne, down at the library, as Paula pointed out, and the rest of the Public Works staff, that really, the workmanship, they hand-built this display. It's just incredible. Lisa, who's sitting out there, trying to be the emcee to get this thing done, but it really is nice. I can't really speak enough about it. So thank you all for that. And definitely happy Thanksgiving, as Bob said, you know, on the cooking side. If you're going to fry your turkey, remember, follow the directions. Do it away from your house, outside. Crazy thing, if you haven't used your oven in a while, before you turn it on, open it and look inside. Make sure it's clean and you haven't stored anything in it. You'd be surprised how many people turn their oven on to preheat it and forget what they have stored in there over the last year. And hopefully, you won't need the fire services. And hopefully, you won't need the fire services. And happy Thanksgiving to all. I know I'm thankful to live in Northampton Township. It's a great place to live for that 12 cents on the dollar, for sure. And just one last thought on Thanksgiving. It shouldn't go unnoticed that our police department coordinated a food drive and put 300 food, you know, meals together for folks that need to have a good Thanksgiving. And so if you see a police, you know, officer, anybody from the police department, you know, make a special thank you for that, in addition to what they do for us every day. But thank you for that. Next, I'll go to, who's next? Township manager.
I have nothing further to report this evening. Happy Thanksgiving to all. Have a great holiday.
Thanks. Assistant manager?
No report tonight. Thanks.
Ken standing in for Joe Pizzo, who we do miss and is in the audience. Thank you for participating, but thank you for coming tonight.
No report, Mr. Chairman, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much. Engineers report?
I have no report. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thanks. And do we have anybody signed up for public comment? So hearing none, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.